So, thanks for joining us. This is the Wednesday, January 17th, meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. First item of our agenda tonight is minutes. We have minutes from Wednesday, January 3rd. So if members have had a chance to review the minutes of January 3rd, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes. Second.
That's moved and seconded. Jack, we're looking at the minutes of Wednesday, January 3rd. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous with one abstention on Pari's behalf. We'll move on to item two, Planning and Zoning, and the zoning subcommittee report.
So, planning board members should listen up, kind of important. We were approached by a citizen brigade to take another look at inclusionary zoning, specifically to make it, to fix the language so that it applies, in their opinion, so that it would apply to all products that require a special permit for reasons of use or dimensions. And the zoning subcommittee was not persuaded that that would be feasible necessarily, although at least some of us thought that something needs to be done to make that language clearer. The language that exists has been a source of dispute for a long time. However, during the course of our discussion, it emerged that there was some interest on the part of the citizens who came to us to take another look at the inclusionary zoning proposal that we brought a couple years ago that involved offsets and other things, the complicated one from a couple years ago. So, we are, the zoning subcommittee is going to take a look at that next time to see if we think it's fixable or workable. But whether or not we decide to bring it forward to you, it seems likely that the citizens will, unless they are persuaded that the board is going to move, the citizens will bring a petition to fix inclusionary zoning. So that's something to look forward to, or not, as the case may be. Meanwhile, the zoning subcommittee itself is continuing to explore how a 40R, a potential 40R overlay in part of the town center might look, what effect it might have on the allowable density in a particular part of the BL zone, the BL zone that is in the middle of the downtown. And this is part of our ongoing consideration, research into whether we should attempt to pursue a 40R overlay. You know, we want to get a sense of what might be possible, what the outcome might look like before moving. Again, this is not going to be done in time for spring. It's something that is a long-term project that we're still advancing on. What might be ready for spring are a couple of infill-type fixes that would allow, potentially allow additional single-family housing or supplemental dwelling unit development in, well, they would, as currently proposed, as we're working on them, we would apply it throughout town, but it would probably have the most impact in the RG zones. One would be to allow the creation of smaller, of lots that don't have the standard frontage, provided that there are, that there is another lot in the nearby vicinity that shares that dimension. In other words, if there's something like a pattern of that lot, of that frontage allowed or existing in the neighborhood, then additional lot should be able to be created. So we're taking a look at that. That might be ready for the spring, if the board decides to go forward with it. The other one is supplemental dwelling units. A couple years ago, we, the board proposed, and town meeting adopted, changes to the supplemental dwelling unit language that made it easier to do them and made the possibilities. Previously, supplemental dwelling units were attached or part of the principal use. We made it possible for detached supplemental dwelling units to take place with a special permit. But they were limited to 800 square feet or 900 square feet with, if they were accessible. Feedback that staff has gotten and we have gotten is that that's a little too small for some people, people who want to live in that, in that size, need more bedroom space maybe than 800 square feet allows. So, we are considering proposing changing that to 1,000 square feet. Again, that would, that would make it more likely that someone might actually build a supplemental dwelling unit and thereby increase the supply of housing. So those are two small infill-type proposals that are simple in concept. We are still preparing the language and evaluating them. And last, I guess, staff is working on adjustments to recreational marijuana regulations based on the draft language that the Cannabis Control Commission has put forth. We will probably want to react to that, including some additional kinds of marijuana use establishments, different kinds of ways of dealing with marijuana, and some other ways to tweak our bylaw so that it matches or fits in with the state regulations. Again, hopefully, we will be able to put something together for the spring. But nothing's ready yet.
All right, thanks, Rob. Is there any board comment on zoning? Any public comments, planning and zoning? Any other topics, planning and zoning? Okay, if not, we're going to move on to item 3A, Old Business. This is the Amherst Public Art Commission, Proposed Town of Amherst Policy: Art Installations by Private Developers on Public Land. Is there someone here to speak to this? Please come up, introduce yourself.
Thank you for agreeing to put this on your agenda. My name is Eric Brody. I'm a member of the Amherst Public Art Commission, and...
I wonder if you could use the mic a little bit closer? Thank you.
Okay, I wasn't aware it was actually working, but, okay. How's that? Is that better?
Perfect.
Yeah. As you know, we brought this to you earlier, or late last year, for consideration, the idea being, now that we have a bylaw that mandates public art in town construction projects, that it was time to consider, and timely to consider, public art at private development projects. That kind of proposal is handled differently in different areas of the country. There are somewhere around 100 municipalities that mandate public art in private development projects in town. We are not recommending that here. We have been discussing exactly how this should be handled in a town like Amherst. We don't want to discourage development, but we do want to encourage public art in building projects here. So, we had a productive discussion last night at the Design Review Board regarding our proposal, and you have before you now, I think, a slightly revised version of the proposal as a result of that meeting, the changes that have been incorporated. And you have two pages there, but the first page that talks about the policy itself, the changes are not substantive, really, but more in terms of clarity. However, in the very first line, there was a change that public art can add instead of public art does, because sometimes public art doesn't, we've been told, and I agree. But the main change is down in the bottom part, Project Art on Public Property, number two, which was somewhat rewritten as a result of suggestions made. Again, it's not particularly substantive, we don't think, but mainly clarative. The second page brings up an issue that we discussed last night, which wasn't resolved, but it's an issue I think that's worth considering, and I would be interested in having the planning board's view on it. If you look on the page, it's titled Alternative Third Section of Policy, third section being titled Private Development Projects. The first paragraph is the same as what exists. What's being suggested here for consideration is the second paragraph, which resulted from a discussion last night, as if the town gets into a discussion with a developer about placing public art on a property, and the developer's interested but wants some kind of a quid pro quo for doing it, and there's some trade-off being discussed, some perhaps tax abatement or variance, or the kinds of things that developers often talk about with towns in order to get what they need to make the building work for them. Then it seems to me that the town has a stake, and more of a stake, if they're willing to make concessions, in what the public art can be. So this is an attempt to insert some sort of supervisory role for the Amherst Public Art Commission in determining how that public art is decided. And that was not a part of the original proposal, because the original proposal didn't get into the details of what happens during a negotiation about public art with a private developer. So, we're thinking of adding that paragraph into the proposed policy in that section. Essentially, it says, "The Public Art Commission would be a consultant regarding the kind of art." And the way we see that happening is, in pretty much the same way it's handled in the bylaw for public art on town property. I think it's fair to say that the Design Review Board was supportive of this proposal. We're at the stage now that what we're trying to do is refine it to make sure that it covers everything it needs to cover, and determine whether the proposal is a policy or just recommendations, guidelines, if you will, or an ordinance. I think we're leaning against it becoming an ordinance, as it being too cumbersome that way and too restrictive. The Public Art Network of the Americans for the Arts has a lot of information on their website regarding this kind of thing, and they say these kinds of proposals, if you will, fall into three kinds of categories, generally guidelines, policies, or ordinances, an increasing level of detail and specificity. Ours, I think, falls somewhere between the guidelines and the policy. If we regard it as a policy, then we think, although since we haven't done this before, we're not 100% certain that it would fall under the purview of the Select Board. If it becomes an ordinance, which we're not recommending, then that, of course, would have to go before town meeting. And guidelines, I'm not exactly sure where that would fall. I think the Art Commission at this point is regarding these more as policies, a policy than anything else. We bring it to you, basically, to get guidance on what you think, because you deal with this, these kinds of issues with developers, on what you think should be in here that's not in here, or what is in here that shouldn't be.
Yes, Chris.
I just have a comment about this alternative third section of the policy.
Sure.
When, in the second paragraph, when you refer to requested variances or tax abatements, I think that language may need to be modified. The town rarely gives variances, and they have very strict requirements, so perhaps it could be requested modifications or waivers in place of variances. And with regard to tax abatements, I know that for the tax incentive that we offered for affordable housing, we needed to go to the state legislature to get a special act passed. So I'm not sure what the status of tax abatements is. I know that the town can grant tax abatements for people over the age of 65 who are low-income, but I'm not sure what other categories the town is allowed to offer tax abatements for. So perhaps the Public Art Commission would like to look into that and find out, is this possible without an act of the state legislature for the town to offer tax abatements? The assessor might know more about that, but I guess I have a question about that.
I was actually going to raise the exact same question about what mechanism, if any, there was to provide those avenues, and I agree with the modification that Chris proposed. Another question I have, it sounds like the path of this document is somewhat unclear. As written, it says it expresses the commitment of the Select Board, so I take that to read that perhaps this is a policy the Select Board might adopt. To the earlier point about any sort of negotiations with private developers, it might not entirely or always be the purview of the Select Board to be having those conversations, so if it is, in fact, something that you would hope applies to other boards, I hope there'd be some clarity about which boards it is exactly that are adopting the policy. I had another question about the section titled Project Art on Private Development Property. Final sentence there says, "The proposed artwork shall be maintained and conserved as a permanent part of the project itself." The permanent sounds a little bit restrictive to me. That's a long time. So I'm wondering if that language is necessary?
It's intentional, actually. Most of the public art, it should be considered the same ways as the public, the percent for art projects, that significant artwork at development projects are intended, generally, to be, to last as long as the building project itself does. And this is an effort to ensure that a longstanding piece of artwork is installed and not something that's going to deteriorate in 18 months.
Rob, so do you mean, you mean that it should say something about for the life of the building or the life of the project, not, because permanent implies it extends beyond the building?
Yeah, I think there should be some sort of limiting qualifying factor in that language.
All right, I understand your concern, the word permanent goes beyond the life of the building. Okay.
So, and also, I think in your answer to my prior question, it sounded like the response was indicating, you mentioned public art. That particular passage doesn't mention public art, it mentions project art on private development property. So is it meant to refer to public art, which is funded through public monies?
Yes, by public art, we mean art that, it would be owned by the private developer, the owner of the property would own it, but by public art, we mean that it's available and open for the public to view, that it wouldn't be in the conference room or of a building, but it would be public that way.
Any other comments from the board on this? Christine?
A little wordsmithing, but on number five, the first line is saying, in the lease, that it says, "The artwork shall be maintained and conserved as an integral part," so I assume there's like a maintenance schedule. But then on the next line, it says, "If it becomes damaged or needs replacement," then it kicks into this higher level of getting it repaired or replaced. But in that, that's, like, to me, damage is like, it gets whacked and something falls off, but to me, sometimes art, especially outside, it just starts to age and fade, you know, which is more of a maintenance thing. So if it, if it's not having its maintenance done, like, someone has to determine, oh, yeah, it's fading, it needs to be repainted or whatever, that's not necessarily damage, but, so maybe on the second line, it's, becomes damaged, needs replacement, or needs maintenance. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, because damage just sounds like it got damaged, like...
Right, that could happen, by accident or by faulty construction, so...
So I'm saying, what if, as a piece of artwork ages, which is part of the maintenance, but is the maintenance go into that same, to me, the maintenance part should go into the same procedure if it's damaged?
I'm not sure I understand your concern.
So, maintenance to me is like, you know, it gets swept or, you know, tidied and cleaned, but I'm saying, like, and damage is like it gets whacked or something falls off it or, you know, because I know art comes in different forms. But I'm saying, like, sometimes art just ages, as it ages over time, so it's like fading and it's no longer as attractive as it once was, but it's not damaged and it may not need replacing. So in the second line, can it be more broad and also include upkeep or that it keeps...
Well, that is the maintenance. That is included in the...
In the first line.
The first sentence, that it's the developer's responsibility to maintain it and conserve it as if it is part of the building itself, like the roof or windows leaking, if there's, it needs maintenance, if it needs to be repainted every five years, or if it's a light project that involves light, that the bulbs would be replaced if they burn out, that's maintenance. But if it's damaged, either by accident, you know, I mean, anything could happen to anything that's outside, either through the weather or by a car hitting it or vandalism, it's the responsibility of the owner to maintain it, as if it were part of the, part of the building. So both are covered. What number five does is relieve the town of the responsibility of maintaining the artwork. Because it's on private property, it becomes the owner's responsibility to maintain it.
I guess my point is, I'm trying to, to me, maintenance in a non-artistic sense is, like you said, the built, like, you clean it, you replace a light bulb maybe, but repainting it or whatever could be the artist's, like, part of the actual artwork, and like, a maintenance person would not be painting it, or, yet it's not, it wasn't actually, it's just the wording, becomes damaged, where that sounds like there was an accident. And I'm saying, I've just seen public art, especially outdoors, that over time, it's not damaged or...
Some art is meant to be...
It's just aging, and it just doesn't look as nice. It's, the metal maybe is pitting, and it doesn't, it's lost its sheen, so no one's going to maintain that. That's like, the artist has to come back and...
Or that could be the artist's intent, that it will rust, and that's what the artist intends.
Could be, could be.
Sure. So, there would be a lease agreement, there'd be an agreement with the artist, of course, between the contractor and the artist. The artist would be hired by the owner, presumably with the assistance of the Public Art Commission, if the, if the lease agreement so specifies. And there would be an agreement between the artist about a maintenance schedule and what is required for that particular piece of work. I know there's a difference between something that is intentionally, that intentionally degrades, and then work that degrades because it was not constructed properly, or that it wasn't intended to last beyond 10 years or five years. But, well, we want to make sure, if a replacement artwork is necessary because it doesn't last as long as it was intended to, that is the owner's responsibility to replace it. Now, if you think there's better wording for that, I'm totally open to that, but I think we've got it covered here, but...
So if I could, you know, one of the central mechanisms here is a lease agreement that the artist would potentially, the developer would be entering into with the town, so that makes some assumption that there's a body authorized to enter into a lease agreement for this public art on public land? So I guess the question there is, would we have to go to town meeting every time we want to lease public land? It seems like, I can't think of an authority in place that would permit this. I don't know, Chris, do you have any comments on that? Or Rob?
If it's in the public way, wouldn't it be the Select Board?
Select Board, yeah, it seems to be the Select Board.
Not in the public way, then you have a point, yeah.
Chris?
I know for easements and transfer of property, we always need to go to town meeting to have it approved, so possibly lease would come under that category.
Jack?
I just have wordsmithing. Some of the superlatives are like, the word enormous, strongly encourage, enormous is the first line background. I mean, just adding value is, it adds value, it's very clear. In private development projects, Town of Amherst could simply recommend, you know, strongly encourage, you're going to encourage it strongly, doesn't, for me, makes it difficult to, again, it says wordsmithing, I would strike strongly at least.
What line is it? Where are you?
Private development projects, the first line.
Oh.
And then significant art, I'm sure that that is appropriate, but how would you define significant art?
Well, everyone have a different definition, but the intent here is to suggest that it's, that it's appropriate for the size of the building that's being constructed. Now, what the Americans for the Arts say in their publications are typically, typically, the art on private developers' projects are the same percentage of the budget as in public, in public buildings for the town. For example, if we have a half a percent for art, typically, in the other places, there are half a percent, on a private development project, a half a percent of their budget would be for public art. We did not specify that, because we felt that that would be too destructive, restrictive, and perhaps too limiting, so we just used the word significant rather than specify a percent, although the board feels that specifying a percent is appropriate, we could certainly do that. Makes me a little bit nervous to do it, since, again, our goal is not to discourage developers from adding public art, but to encourage it, so, but that's, you know, I'm in the minority there in terms of what happens around the country, because this is not a large town, so I'm a little bit reluctant to specify a percent.
So if I could, I think that your response transitioned from, in terms of size and scale of the artwork, to the cost of the artwork, and I think, I'm not sure of Jack's question, but I would ask the question of, what, what size? And your answer initially about significance was that the artwork would be appropriate in proportion, I think, or scale to the project, which seems like reasonable language to me. I would agree about some clarification on what you mean by significance, specifically if you're talking about size or cost.
I don't have a strong feeling personally about size versus cost, because I think you can have very significant art that's not sizable. So, again, we have to think carefully about how we want to limit what we say here. I'm trying to keep it open without, I want it to be as clear as possible without nailing it down too tightly, so that it gives flexibility for, within discussions, and for the artists and the contractors to determine the best art for the project. I mean, if it's a lighting artistic project of some kind, it would, might be difficult to determine that by size, as opposed to impact, you know? So significant may not be the best word, but it's at least a flexible word.
Possibly you might want to use something like art which makes a significant impact to the streetscape or to the area in which it's located. Possibly you might want to use something like art which makes a significant impact to the streetscape, or to the area in which it's located, or some phrase like that. So that the, the impact becomes the significance, rather than the art itself.
Okay. I'll, I'll work with that. It sounds reasonable.
So is it fair to say that this is a work in progress, it's a draft, and you'll be back with a later draft?
Well, let me ask about that, because who are we ultimately trying to please with this? Are you the ultimate determination of how this reads, or does this then go to another body? Or is it up to the Art Commission itself?
Well, if it becomes a, a policy of the select board, the select board clearly has to approve it. So that seems to be the target.
Well, I think that the decision is yours to make about what approach you want to take with this. You mentioned three at the beginning, guideline, a policy, or an ordinance, and I think that that's a good way to sum it up. If you want the planning board to adopt, to adopt a policy like this, I would suggest that there's some language that references the planning board. Or if you want the planning board to recommend this to the select board, then it should reference solely the select board. But just some clarity about what you're looking for, you know, could come from the Art Commission itself. And then I think the planning board would be happy to recommend appropriately.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Other comments? Chris?
Oh, I was just going to say, if it were zoning bylaw, I think it would be in the purview of the planning board. Given the fact that this is either guideline or a policy, probably, a policy would be a select board issue. I know that when we approached them with a complete streets policy a number of years ago, it was clearly the select board that dealt with that. Of course, it was streets in that case, but I think if it's a town policy, it really needs to come from the select board. But the Art Commission could certainly request the planning board's support for its presentation to the select board.
Okay. Any other comments?
So I guess we should expect a revision, a new draft to act upon?
I'd be happy to supply a new draft with the suggestions made this evening.
Great. Rob?
I'm not sure we need a new draft. I think we, we, you know, we don't need to know the exact language. We know, we know what he's trying to accomplish, the general, the outline of, of the policy that, that he wants the select board to adopt, or whatever. I, I think we can, unless he, unless something changes dramatically between now and when he actually decides that it's finished, I think we can say, this seems like a good idea. We, we support your taking it, or we recommend that you take it to the select board, recommend the select board adopt it when it's in finished form, or whatever. Or we can ask him to come back if, if you want, but I don't think that's necessary.
I agree. I think, I think we can, we can approve the idea and not worry about the specific language at this point.
Yeah, right.
I agree as well.
Any opposed that recommendation? No? Okay. So you can carry forth with our blessing, then.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thanks for joining us tonight. So we're going to move on now to the next item on our agenda. It's old business topics not reasonably anticipated. Are there any of those? No? Okay. We'll move on then to item 4A. This is New Business, U-Drive LLC, Proposed Alternative Plan for Residential Development on Map 13B, Parcel 33. Review and recommendations to Zoning Board of Appeals. Of course?
Drive from here?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Stutzman, members of the board, Ms. Brestrop, I'm Tom Reedy, an attorney with Bacon-Wilson here in Amherst. Here on behalf of U-Drive LLC, to present to you a conceptual redesign of a project, specifically the residential portion of a project down on University Drive here in Amherst. You recall, we were here October 18th to float the idea by you for the project. You'll also recall, hopefully, that, I think it was 2016, you sponsored a zone change from Office Park to limited business for this parcel of land. The two uses that we are proposing and have proposed, a rest class two restaurant and an apartment building, could not have been allowed without this zone change. So we have submitted to the Conservation Commission, we've submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And through that process, in an effort to try to accommodate one of the southerly abutters' concerns, we've looked at redesigning that southerly parcel. And so I will show you... And so you may recall that we had a building here, we had, thank you, Ms. Brestrop, a building here that had those townhouse-style units that Kuhn Riddle had designed, then also a building back here. And what we've done is, and we haven't submitted this to the Zoning Board of Appeals yet, we want to get some initial feedback from the planning board on site design and architecture before we actually do. But given some of the pushback, quite frankly, that we're getting from the southerly abutter for this building, and in order to make the project economically viable, we've had to redesign it in a way to get more density and more units, which you'll see here in this building. We're also considering having some sort of leasing office or commercial space on the first floor of this building. So this may be coming back before you as a mixed use. If it doesn't, and it's strictly apartment, we may be coming, we would go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a different, Zoning Board of Appeals special permit for the apartment use. So that's a higher level. This proposal has, I think, 50 non-ADA parking spaces, three ADA parking spaces, 52% of them compact spaces. So we're going to need a waiver from the Zoning Board of Appeals for that, or you for that. And we're also looking to somewhat self-restrict to one space for one and two-bedroom units, and to two spaces for three and four-bedroom units, pretty specifically because of the proximity to public transportation and also the bike path. So we thought that this was probably a, a good area to try to reduce the number of parking spaces that, that we would have. You'll see here, we've got some bike racks proposed, we've got vegetation and landscaping shown on the plan. We are, we do have a wetlands crossing, and we do have some proposed wetland replication towards the back. Arboretis and fencing are proposed along the southerly and southeasterly portion of the property for screening, and they lead from wetlands to wetlands, so we think that they'll be pretty effective in deterring any individuals from crossing from one parking area to another, and vice versa. So it wasn't our first design, but I think it's one of necessity at this point, quite frankly. So I guess, if you've got questions on the site plan, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise I'll turn it over to John to walk you through what the design will look like.
Can you just, just really general, what, what are the objections to the, to the southeast? Was it noise, or light, or what?
It's kind of been a moving target, quite frankly, of what those objections are. They have filed a lawsuit claiming adverse possession and/or prescriptive easement over, if you follow my mouse, this portion of the land, and also this portion of the land, saying that they have used it openly notoriously against claim of right for a period of 20 years or more. We disagree, a little bit boring, but historically, this was all owned by Lincoln Pulp and Paper and Lincoln Land and Timber. They had the same president of the board of directors. One was actually collateral for a note for the other, so we don't think, and this went till like, 2003. It's obviously hasn't been 20 years since that time, so we think that substantially on the merits, we have a good argument. The problem is, a lawsuit like that can take three years to actually get through. So we went back and thought, well, what can we do? And it was to increase density here, and eliminate the need to have anything over here. And, quite frankly, try to settle and say, we'll just, if you support the project, we'll convey this land and this land to you, and then work together on any potential stormwater issues that you may have over in this area. So, again, not first choice, but necessity at this point. And again, I'm more than happy to answer additional questions on the site plan, or if you're interested in the architecture, I can kick it over to John.
Christine?
How many parking spaces were before and now, just...
So there were 56 parking, I believe it was 56 parking spaces before, and then 53 total now. Including those 52% of compact spaces.
And the handicap is the same?
Yeah, so before there were four, now there are three ADA spaces. And so based upon, at least this design's unit count, and the number of bedrooms, 50 parking spaces, 5-0, would be what's required, based on the number of ones and twos, the number of threes and fours, if we restrict to one and two bedrooms, one parking space, and to three and four bedrooms, two parking spaces. So we would have the 50 parking spaces, and then have three ADA, instead of just saying, let's have 47 with three ADA, just in case it doesn't link up perfectly between the two.
So as mentioned, you might go the route of apartments or mixed use, so what are we seeing before us?
If it was mixed use, and, and we're working this through the Conservation Commission. So Conservation has a 50-foot wetland setback from, for residential uses. They have a 75-foot setback for commercial uses. So we're discussing with Dave Zomek and Beth Wilson, if there was, on the first floor, outside of the 75-foot setback, which you'll see, if this is 50, and this is 50, your 75 is a thin sliver right here, that's why residential really only works here. But putting some sort of commercial use in, you know, this area to meet that mixed-use requirement, quite frankly, and I think John will maybe talk about it a little bit later, the 24 units in an apartment is really constrictive for design. That's why we've got two buildings here. And it essentially requires that we put all our eggs in a certain basket without the ability to change. Well, sure, we can change, we're still only moving those pieces around of those 24 units. So, as you know, with the mixed use, there is no limit to the number of units that you can have. With that, we then have the flexibility to say, okay, instead of, you know, eight four-bedroom units, let's have 16 two-bedroom units. Let's split them up and put two bedrooms, based on what the market dictates. I think you saw down on, I think it's One East Pleasant, where they had an approval, came back, said the market doesn't like these number of units or bedrooms. We need to come back with something different. When we get, if we got this approved as an apartment, we're stuck at 24 units. The numbers just don't work if you change those fours to only one-two, because you've already maxed out the 24 units. You can't, from that four, do two-twos, because then all of a sudden, you're exceeding that 24-unit limit. So, at this point, that's why we're considering doing the mixed use. I've had the conversation with the building commissioner about his interpretation of the zoning bylaw, and if that would fly, and it seems like it would, given what the zoning bylaw says, in this limited-business zoning district, which doesn't have those 40%, the 40% requirement, I think that some of the other, or at least the general business zoning district would have for mixed use. So that's, the long and the short of it, that's why. But we're still working through it with Conservation to make sure that they, they agree.
Chris?
So I have a question for Mr. Reedy, which is that the mixed-use building in our zoning bylaw is considered a residential use. So by what criteria does the Conservation Commission use to determine whether a building is residential or non-residential?
That's exactly the question that we're looking to have answered. I think if, and you know, talking through it with Beth Wilson, if it was the entire, if it's the entire first floor, is that commercial? If it's the majority of the building, is that commercial? So, our position is that if we are able to have that office building without, you know, outside of the 75-foot setback, but within the building, and, I mean, why I think it's okay to proceed this evening is, you'll see from John's design, this design would be for totally residential or that mixed use, because there's a little entry vestibule, you would be able to go up to where that commercial space was. So, from the exterior, you're not going to notice any difference. And so as a practical matter, pitched to the ConCom is, you wouldn't notice any difference on the resource areas. The, the effects on the resource areas wouldn't be any different, because that commercial space is on the interior of the building. If you want to put in a good word with Mr. Zomek or Ms. Wilson, we'd appreciate that, because we do think that is a good solution to what's happening here, because of the constraints that we're dealing with. And it does give the flexibility to respond to the market, to make sure that the housing product is actually one that's viable, instead of saying, well, like I said, we'll have 10 four-bedrooms here, which, quite frankly, who knows in 10 or 15 years, if the university gets more housing, that, you know, there's four bedrooms on campus, people want to live there, and these four bedrooms just aren't filled. And I think having the flexibility of changing it to one and two bedrooms, which we do see a market demand for, and keeping the footprint, the parking would be exactly the same, I think makes some sense. So, long-winded, but that's the reason.
Any other questions for Mr. Reedy, before we move on to the next presenter? Okay.
Can we take, leave that up just for a minute?
Oh, sure.
Good evening. John Kuhn, Kuhn Riddle Architects. As I had outlined when we were here back in October, the challenge for this site was one of mainly working around wetlands. And at that time, we also looked at a variety of ways to develop the site. We looked at one building with parking underneath, and, and the, the project that we presented to you was three buildings, as, as Mr. Reedy mentioned, sort of townhouse-style buildings, three stories, that would not require any waiver in terms of height. In looking to redesign this, we, of course, are still dealing with the wetlands, and as you can see, there is the, there he is. There's a 50-foot setback right there, that dash line, is a 50-foot setback right there, that's the dash line. It, it explains a little bit why these buildings are angled the way they are. The challenge in, in looking to redesign this was trying to consolidate the number of units into two buildings instead of three. We looked at leaving building one, which is the, the building towards the front, which is six units, three stories. The owner and developer liked the overall design, so the challenge then became, how do we build a larger four-story building next to a three-story building and have them mesh architecturally? We looked at one point in trying to pull the parking underneath the building, but that didn't really make sense from an economical standpoint. So where we ended up was with a four-story building with flats, essentially, with 24 units. As Mr. Reedy was mentioning, in an ideal world, the 24-unit would not be a limitation. And I would, on a side note, urge that the zoning subcommittee at some point look at that 24-unit limit, because it's, people get around it by putting in a little bit of mixed use, or a little bit of commercial on calling it mixed use. That's certainly what Archipelago has done, and I think the project down on Route 9 that's going in is, was non-conforming beforehand. So there are ways of getting around it, but if you take a strict interpretation of the zoning bylaw, the way it's written, 24 units is, is the limit. So, that's the number of units in this building. There's 30 units total now. It would have been nice to put that into one building, but that was not really an option. So, that's the explanation for how we came to four stories. It will require a waiver, we're able to go from 35 feet up to 45 feet through a special permit process. I guess we want to go back to the... Thank you for minimizing it up from there. Here? So... I have four views of the buildings. You recall the one on the left... You recall, the one on the left is Building One, so we're looking from sort of the south side of the site. The three buildings that we had previously all were variations on the building on the left. The building now on the right is four stories, and we tried to bring some of the elements of the three-story building into the four-story building. So we're using many of the same materials, using a very similar roof line, as you'll see in some of the other renderings, this is a gable, a long gable shape that runs the entire length of the building, it's about 140 feet long. And then these gables are sort of projecting out, cantilever it out about two feet from the building, in a different color, sort of reminiscent of the dormers that are on the original building. This is looking more from the southeast corner, so you're able to see the newer building, the four-story building. Will be right at the 45-feet limitation. The site, as you recall, is sloping up from University Drive towards the rear, so with a long building like this, the grade is sloping up about four feet. I think you see it best in this rendering from the, sort of the southwest corner. You see Building One on the left. So what we'll do is, the entrance to the building will be at the southwest corner of the four-story building. It'll be four stories down from the first-floor slab, there'll be sort of a stone base that runs around, and then you can see the grade on the south side sloping up to sort of the first-floor slab level towards the east end. That southwest corner will be an entrance, and it'll have an elevator that provides access to the first floor and to the other floors as well. There are six units per floor, so they're all stacked, there's 1-1, 1-2, 2-3s, and 2-4s per floor at the present time. Whether that changes some, as Mr. Reedy was mentioning, we don't know yet, but that's where we stand at the moment. And then this, I think, gives the best view from University Drive coming in. So the goal was to try to bring the two buildings together, build something that's four stories, yet is compatible with the three-story building that we already had designed. So that is my presentation.
Chris?
I had two comments. One is that putting the units all together in a four-story building actually alleviates some of the concerns about drainage, because there's less roof area for runoff, so that's a positive. The other question I have is, with regard to requesting a special permit for the height, for four stories, the special permit is under footnote A, and so footnote A asks the applicant to look at the surrounding area to find, within the context of the building, are there other buildings that are similar? And I'm wondering if the applicant has thought about that, are there buildings in the area that have a similar height?
I don't know of any four-story buildings in the immediate area. There are some 20-story buildings further down, University Drive, but there is nothing of...
Sloboody's, yeah.
Sloboody's, is that three or four? I might be four.
It's tall. And I mean, I think to John's point, you know, if you're traveling northerly on University Drive, what you see in the distance are those taller university buildings. I think that somewhat frames the backdrop, and I guess that's how you define the neighborhood, but I think we would suggest that this fits in, especially given the surrounding topography, you know, to the east, you're only, you get to where we are now. Everything inclines till you get to the center of town, and so I think even from the west, looking at it, I think it's going to fit in because of the hilly backdrop, Blue Hills Road, and so on, till you get to the center of town. So while there may not be one building we could point to to say, "It looks like this," or "It is like this," I think it will fit into the context of the neighborhood, given what that neighborhood is.
Other questions or comments from the board? So at some point in the near future, the applicant will be making a determination about whether to be coming to the ZBA or the planning board with this. Is there a sense of the timeline on a ConCom determination?
Beth Wilson and I went back and forth today a little bit. I would expect over the, hopefully, the next few days, because we're having a stormwater design redone, based on this plan, which is fine, because either route that we take, the footprints are staying the same. So it really is just having conversations with the Director of Conservation and Development, Dave Zomek, Beth Wilson, Ms. Brestrop, Mr. Moore, just to see what the sense is, and that will then determine what the floor plan is, which will determine who we come before. And so I guess, this evening, what I would request is, if you would, should we decide to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for an apartment, make the recommendation to them, similar to as you did on October 18th, that this is a project worthy of your support. If we come before you, obviously, you'll have the merits to decide at that point, essentially saving us a trip to come back once we do make that final decision.
Chris?
I have another question, which is that I understand if the larger building becomes a mixed-use building, that that would come before the planning board, but with the smaller building, wouldn't that still remain an apartment building, and wouldn't that need to go to the ZBA? So it would be kind of a mixed board here?
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I think it would.
Well, my general sense is that we may want to wait to see what direction that this goes. I feel it's a little early in the process for the board to make a recommendation. My sense is that although the board did so back in October, this project is of a somewhat different nature, and I think that the heights involved require some different levels of scrutiny, so I'd suggest that the applicant return to us when a decision is made about which course they're taking, although it sounds like it may actually be both in one scenario. That's my sense. Other board members?
I would agree with that. I think, I think talking about this is really premature, it's before we know what's going to be on that ground floor.
Any comments about the architecture, or the site layout, as we're thinking about it?
Were alternative color schemes considered? The yellow is jumping out at me a little bit.
It does jump.
We did look at a variety of color schemes, and I think last time I brought the color chips, which I think are better to look at than the renderings, but I don't have them with me tonight, so.
All right, Rob?
I like the yellow, but I, so, a mixed-use building is a site plan review building, it's not a special permit building. That'd be a shame, to lose the affordable units.
But I'll note that, I believe, under your zoning bylaw, if you have more than 10 units above the first floor in the BL zoning district...
Oh, in the BL, okay.
I think it is special permit, which...
Right.
And then maybe if we're talking about, I mean, in one of the designs that we've thought of, there may be, you know, 47 units if they're smaller bedrooms, which triggers five affordable units, instead of the four affordable units that we would have otherwise provided under 30 units or 37 units. So, we still do have to provide the affordable units.
Thank you, I forgot about that.
Chris?
I'm thinking that we should check that, because it may just apply to commercial, instead of commercial and BL, now that they're separated in the dimensional chart.
I see several of us looking through the bylaw. Does anyone have a reference?
So, the conclusion is, Mr. Crowner?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, yeah, in those limited business districts, not abutting the BG district, a special permit is required when residential use is above the first floor, exceed 10... Yeah, so he's right.
All right, so it requires a special permit.
I'll take it.
So you didn't reference the affordable units in your presentation, but there's an assumption that they would be there?
They would be there, yes. And whether it's in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals for apartments, or in front of you for mixed use, special permit, they will be there. We've also already had discussions with the Amherst Housing Authority about their desire and capacity to monitor and manage essentially those units, and they're on board.
This is probably an emergent issue, based on, I think, how we just realized this could go two concurrent paths, the two boards, but does staff have an opinion, or does the applicant have an opinion about an issue we could encounter, where we have two different unit counts, in terms of the affordable housing requirement? So we have one building that's six units, and one that's 40?
So ostensibly, the six wouldn't trigger the nine-plus that would otherwise be required under the affordable, but, I mean, I think we're probably looking at the total number of units. I mean, I don't think we're, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we're trying to pull a fast one.
Christine?
So, maybe I missed this earlier, but did you look, because it is a big difference in the sizes, and I understand you didn't maybe want to redesign the first building, but was there any thought to moving some of the units into the first? And if you did that on the first building, does some of it fit into the commercial 75-foot?
I don't think so, and I think the need to provide an elevator, if we went up a story for that first one, is, that would be the issue.
If you went to four...
Went to a four-story, yeah, and I don't, so this right here, what John has designed, has an entry, all entries are on that first level. You've got a one and a three bedroom in that first vertical column, a four in the second vertical column, another four-bedroom in the third vertical column, and then another one and a three in that fourth vertical column. So there's really not a lot of room to expand unless you add a story, or you had each floor be a separate, you know, unit. And the problem with that is you're having somebody schlep up three floors, which is something we wanted to avoid. So then if you go to the fourth story, to get the density, to justify it, you're talking about an elevator at $150,000, which starts to make the economics not work. So, yeah, we have tried to toss this around every which way to get it to work, and this is what we've come up with.
Could then, could you just flip back to the map page of the wetlands, just because we don't have a map here, and I can't remember?
Be down at the bottom, PDF, the orange one, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. And could you just show where that, the 50-line is on the whole?
Sure.
I remember on the first building, it curves in.
Yeah, I'll see if I can, yeah, I'm going to zoom in just a little bit, so you can... So if you follow where this little hand is, right there, right there, right here. Yeah, this is, that's why when I say, you know, this is, this is the footprint, and so if it's mixed use, and it turns out to, you know, the footprint isn't expanding, the number of floors from four wouldn't expand, the 45 feet is the max that we would go, so this, this seems like to have the maximum on the site that we could, you know, taking into consideration not developing this back area for the hopes that we can actually get this approved, get some housing on this site within the foreseeable future, instead of five years down the road. So that's, that's why we designed it the way we have. I think it's why the site is still undeveloped.
All right, so we think we have an approach of requesting the applicant come back when they've made a decision about their own approach. Are there any other final questions, comments from the board on this? Nope? Okay, well, thanks for joining us, we look forward to seeing you again soon.
Great, thank you very much.
So we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, item 4B. This is South Point Apartments, East Hadley Road, proposed new apartment building and site improvements, review and recommendations to Zoning Board of Appeals.
Carlos, I do have images of that on the computer.
Yeah, I think you have, this, the only differences that this one has, the one that we sent you has a built-in, this one doesn't have, so they can see...
Oh, yeah, the existing, if you did want to use this. So, I've got, do you want to...
I think that's the...
It's just the location.
Yeah. Probably up in the right corner, I think, and the thing that looks like four, no, not that one.
Let me drive for a minute. Okay, great. So good evening again, for the record, Tom Reedy, Attorney General, Beth Wilson, here in Amherst, here on behalf of Ronex Corp., the landowner of South Point, here in Amherst. With me this evening, from Berkshire Design, Carlos Nieto, the landscape architect, our architect, David O'Sullivan, and representative of the landowner, Byron Jeldon. So what we are looking at here is some infill development, and when we talked about just previously for University Drive, 24 units being the max, this site actually has buildings with, buildings that exceed 24 units. So it's pre-existing non-conforming, because it's apartments in the RN zoning district, which apartments are not allowed in that zoning district. So the use is pre-existing non-conforming, the number of units in a building already exceeding 24 is pre-existing non-conforming. We also have some other pre-existing non-conformities, such as the unit breakdown. Your zoning bylaw requires that no more than 50% of any apartment be of one type of unit. The buildings existing on this site already have a majority of a certain bedroom unit in the buildings, more than 50%, and so we would be looking for that same relief here. We also already exceed lot coverage, and we're going to look to continue to exceed that. This is a Zoning Board of Appeals special permit to expend or enlarge a pre-existing non-conforming use, and to modify previous special permits. So we will be in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals for this one. Maybe Carlos, if you want to take through the site plan?
Yes, I wanted to, in addition, my name is Carlos Nieto, I'm from the Design Group. And I, you're seeing what we are proposing, I just wanted to make sure that you understood what was there before. So what we're proposing is this 47-unit building that you're seeing, which is in this area right now, which is right now open space, or open area in the site. The second item that we are proposing on the site is expanded parking lot, which is what you're seeing on the top there, with a play area next to it, and an open patio, or a big kind of patio area, which is 30 extra car space. So that area we're, that I'm talking about is this area, so right now there is no building or anything built right now in that area. I just wanted, so that you understand what was there before, and what we're proposing right now. As Tom Reedy mentioned, we are in the South Point apartment complex, which, there is a property line that goes basically right in this area, and this side is what's called the boulders, boulder apartments. Those are the two apartment complexes, one next to each other. What the client is proposing is a new 47-unit building, which will include 43 parking spaces off of it, sidewalks, everything is going to be ADA, accessible. We will have trash receptacles that are going to be attached to that building. As part of the project for designing and building this building, will be to expand or to take away some of the parking spaces, the parking spaces that are right now there. And that's why we're proposing this new parking area, also, the 30 spaces, so that we can accommodate all the cars that are going to be here. 30 spaces, so that we can accommodate all the cars that are going to be here. The, we're proposing three ADA parking spaces, and you can't really see here, but we'll have bike racks right at the entrance so that there's also bike racks available. The second part, there will be back access to the trash receptacle area, and then the main, three main entrances, one main entrance and two other entrances on the side. To the north of our site, as you--
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Could you use the microphone when you're walking around?
I'll hang with you.
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
To the north of the site, which is what you're seeing on the screen right now, is the, this proposed parking, extra parking area, 30 parking area. And then we will--
We're also proposing a, an area for picnic barbecue area, kind of a bigger paved area plaza with, also that will be the area where the mailboxes are too.
Just a reminder to hold the mic up.
And then a proposed playground off of that, in that area, just to balance out the fact that we've taken out a, some of the recreation that existed in the site, which was in this area originally. That's the majority of the site plan. In addition to what you're seeing, as for hardscape, we are proposing plantings to soften up and to bring some green into the area surrounding the parking. There are existing mature trees that we're going to be keeping on this area and also on this area as much as possible. I believe that's, that's the details on the site plan. I'm going to leave it to David Sullivan to explain the architecture.
All right, David O'Sullivan, O'Sullivan Architects. One of the things we, before the board, the existing South Point has the massive mansard roofs, and part of the thing that was approved before was to take those off through your board before and create it. So there was a fire in one of the buildings, and we kind of basically have take that same scheme for the exterior that matches what we're kind of phasing in on the rest of the project. So the new building, as far as colors, materials, style, will match eventually what everything in South Point will look like for the exterior. One of the things that we did do as we were developing this, and we're trying to propose, pretty much everything over there has the same unit type. So one of the things with doing a building of this shape and this size was to offer, basically, the entire building is ADA accessible. So all 47 units will be handicapped adaptable, and we'll do the 5% of the full handicapped accessible as per the building code. But by doing, concealing everything in here, we could do an elevator, do the first floor first. So we have a main building entry right in the knuckle with common spaces and an elevator. So we could basically have, and we have secondary entrances here and here off of the main parking area, so that basically all the first floor units are accessible, every, even the exit up back is accessible. And then by putting in the elevator, all 47 units become something that's not offered basically in the other buildings, because the other buildings have limited accessibility. So by concentrating them into one big building versus trying to do, say, two smaller 24-unit buildings at this location, we're able to get the economics of making an elevator and creating kind of a different unit type and a different option for people renting on the site. These are pretty much all two bedrooms with a couple threes, but they're all set up and give kind of an option that is not available to people at South Point now. So, any other questions, let me know.
I wonder if the architect would describe the materials that are going to be used on the building?
So as per the other South Point, the base is a brick masonry, and the upper would be composite clavards, double hung windows, French balconies, and just composite trim. So basically trying to mimic what we're doing on the other building.
To revisit a point I made during the last application, this is requiring a special permit, so there will be affordable units provided.
Correct, there will be six affordable units provided as part of this process.
Are there existing project-based affordable units in the current development?
Yes. And I don't know if it's under a special permit, but there are 21 units occupied by those who hold Section 8 vouchers. I haven't done the math to figure out or taken a look to see if it's a regulatory agreement or otherwise, but yes, there are affordable units there.
Jack?
I was curious about the parking and how the northern parking lot will be utilized by whom, and, you know, how that is a function of the, of the new building, or is it a fact, a factor of displacing existing parking?
So the way that we're, we're doing the parking, actually, can't show--
Sir, could you just grab the microphone again?
The idea was that--
Sorry, could you grab the microphone? Thank you.
Yes. The next parking over, we are proposing a sidewalk that will connect these two buildings, that will also connect to that area where the parking lot is right now. We are displacing some parking spaces on this area, but what we found out is that the parking spaces are adequate right now for the people who live there. And the ratio right now we have of parking is about one in seven total for the whole project. By this proposal and having to have taken out some of that parking spaces and providing these 30 parking spaces, we stay in a very similar ratio of 1.61, 1.62. So we're still in the same ratio as what it is, or very similar to the ratio that we had before. It is one of the only places also to feasibly put in parking in here at this moment. At one other point, we had looked at this area for more apartments, and if, that's an ideal area for more apartments, and it would be really far, you know, much farther away from where we were taking some of that parking spaces. So that was one of the reasons why we cited those 30 parking spaces there. And then we're providing 43 parking spaces in the area next to the actual building.
So that building just to the north of the proposed building, that one, they will be gravitating to the northern parking lots over time?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, yeah.
Exactly.
Michael?
I have a question about the gray areas just north of the proposed new building.
The two other buildings.
Are they two, there are two buildings?
There's a building right here.
Okay.
And another building right here.
And those are apartment buildings as well?
Those are apartment buildings.
I'm sorry, I read the white, erratically shaped buildings as the apartments.
Oh, no. So in total, there are 10 buildings right now, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, which is kind of outside of the view. And this will be our 11th building.
Got it.
Where does the project stand now with building and lot coverages, and where will it after?
So right now, in lock coverage, we are at existing at 31% and proposed at 35%. For building coverage, we are under the 20% maximum. We are at 10.4% existing and 12.5% proposed. Of course, the increase on the lock coverage comes from the parking areas and providing some of that, yeah, recreational facility, so.
Well, one of my initial reactions is that the planning board over the last few years has looked at ways to increase density in an appropriate, appropriate manners at apartment complexes like this, and I think that the project achieves that. The apartments are already located near transportation. I wish they were nearer to services. I think that that's something that residents there cite often, but the public transportation there is very strong. So to me, it seems like appropriate infill at this, at this complex.
It's a great point about the public transportation, one or the other. The area where we're putting that 30 parking spaces is right in front of where the, also the bus stop is, and we'll have that recreational element right across from there. So if you're waiting for the bus, you can be, and your child could be in the playground, or you could be there. So, yeah, we were taking into consideration that, public transportation.
And is this application already submitted to the ZBA?
No, we'll sub, we'll submit it next week for the February 22nd zoning board of appeals hearing.
So I take it you're looking to ask for the same thing you did with the prior project?
Read my mind.
Okay. Well, I think in the case of this one, I'd be happy to recommend this to the ZBA unless there's any board member objections.
No, I think it's a good project. I think we should recommend it.
Is there a motion on that?
A move to recommend that we, to the ZBA, that we approve the project?
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Rob?
I'm a little uncomfortable with saying to approve the project.
Right.
I think we should move that it's, that it's in keeping with, with the master plan or, you know--
Whatever the appropriate language is.
That it satisfies the infill goals of the planning board, and, and it seems appropriate for the site, and it should be looked on favorably by the ZBA, something like that.
Chris, did you catch that? Is that an approved amendment to your motion, Michael?
Sure.
Okay, great. All right, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. All right, we'll move on then to the next item on our agenda. It's new business topics not reasonably anticipated. None, okay. We'll move on to Form A and R subdivision applications. Chris?
We did have an A and R sub, A and R application, but we didn't hear back from the town engineer in time to present it to you. But let me explain it to you. Actually, I could run into my office and show it to you, and then perhaps ask Mr. Schreiber to come in at a later date to sign it, because I don't think, I think the 21 days is going to run out by the time you meet next time. So let me just run into the office and grab it. So the property is on Chutesbury Road, and it turns out that the person who owns this property actually has a well that is on an adjacent property. We're not sure how that happened, but I can show you a plan of the, of the site, and you'll see where the well is located. And this person is acquiring a strip of land at the back of the property for the purposes of having the well on her property. The parcel on which the well is located is in chapter 61, chapter 61, I think, forestry. So that will have to be taken out of chapter 61 in order to complete this transaction. But in any event, this is the first step along the way. So let me show you the property.
They're just adding this part here?
Would you authorize Mr. Schreiber to sign this when he's available?
Yes.
Mr. Skills?
Yes. Was that the only A and R?
That's the only A and R.
Okay, upcoming ZBA applications. We heard about two possible ones.
I, I'm not aware of any other new ones.
Okay. Any upcoming SPP, SPR, SUB applications?
Nope.
All right, move then on to item eight, planning board committee and liaison reports. PVPC?
No, nothing has happened since the last meeting.
Okay, CPA?
Yeah, so we met last week, and we're currently going through the questions and answers for the projects, and things are moving along, and we have another meeting next week, so.
Great, thanks. Design review board?
Mr. McCarthy drew up a detailed memorandum of our meeting yesterday, which you have in front of you, and it clearly summarizes what we did, which was basically discuss the, our public art proposal that we heard about a few minutes ago.
Great. The Housing Trust met last week. We talked more about developing a policy proposal for other boards in towns that would lay out housing targets for production of affordable housing over the next five years. The group will still be working on that in its coming meetings, and we also looked at prioritizing CPA proposals related to affordable housing. I already heard from the zoning subcommittee. UTAC Housing hasn't met, has economic, nope, okay. Downtown Parking Working Group?
Met yesterday, working on an employer, employee parking survey for downtown Amherst that will come out soon, and working on revising commercial parking downtown. Next meeting is February 7th at 10:30.
Great, thank you. Chris?
May I make an addition to that? Two illustrious members, or at least one member and one staff member of the Downtown Parking Working Group are presenting to the Massachusetts Municipal Association this weekend about all the good work that has been done by the group over the last year, and talking about how it's turned out. There are two other towns that are also presenting, but it seems that they have a very different approach. So it'll be really good for the people who are there to hear about Amherst's approach.
Great, thank you. Reporter of the chair, I have no report. Reporter of staff?
I just want to reiterate how thrilled I am to have Maureen Pollack working on our staff. We already gave her an assignment at the zoning subcommittee meeting.
Great, that's good to hear. Okay, then we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.